Welcome to the first executive meeting of 2017 and a very belated Happy New Year to you all. Can we just start with some basic housekeeping rules? And that is, we are not expecting any fire alarms tonight. So if the alarm does sound, can I ask you to please exit the council chamber by one of the two fire exits? The assembly point is outside Waitrose. If I could ask you to proceed there and we can then make sure that everyone's accounted for and you can then leave and go home. But hopefully that will not happen this evening. So moving to the first item, which is the minutes of the last meeting which was held on the 29th of November and the special executive meeting which was held on the 13th of December. They've been laid on the table for half an hour. Are you content that I sign those minutes?
Agreed.
Thank you colleagues, I'll sign those minutes at the end of the meeting. Can we move to apologies for absence?
Namaste leader.
Thank you. Moving on, any declarations of interest? No? Right, I believe we have one question from Member of the public. And Mr Hyman, would you like to come forward and speak? Yes, we can make sure that... You just wait a second and Mrs McQuillan.
Thank you, Council Leader. In the 29th of December edition of the Farnham Herald, the chairman of the Surrey Waverley Local Committee announced that an exciting new proposal backed by RMP is about to be unveiled to solve the town's traffic, pedestrian and air quality problems. However, it is evident that the traffic modelling for the new solution does not include modelling of the Crest-Nicholson-Saint Brith East Street pedestrianisation proposals. And given that Surrey cannot be claiming that they intend to implement both crests and Mr Hunt's plans separately and in isolation, this indicates that Surrey highways accept that they can no longer support or implement crests in practical and discredited road scheme. Such a major shift in Surrey's position would require a significant redesign of the Brightwell project. And as Waverley's existing air quality action plan and local plan are both founded upon an assumption that crest scheme will be installed, I ask that you provide a definitive statement of the executive position in respect of whether or not it is still your intention that crest traffic and pedestrianisation proposals will be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Hyman. I can confirm that Surrey County Council, as the highway authority, have actually confirmed to us that any future town centre highway schemes for Farnham will also need to work in connection with the approved Brightwell's development. And I would also remind members that the scheme itself is extant and capable of implementation. Thank you. Mr Hyman, I'm sure you receive a copy of this as a written response as well. Colleagues, if we move to item five on the agenda, which is the executive forward programme on pages nine to 12. Any comments on the programme under your portfolios? councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Leader. I just wonder if you could add a safeguarding policy under my community services and community safety, being led by Kelvin Mills. I think there's a need for an overall safeguarding policy for the council. We need to draw a lot of it together. So we'd be looking at possibly April to bring something back or if not, a progressive initial summary. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that... Can we note that? Thank you very much. We'll ensure that that's included and updated. That's fine. Colleagues, any other comments on your portfolio areas at all? No? Can I take it then that the forward plan is agreed, subject obviously to the addition of councillor Dinas and his safeguarding policy, which seems an excellent idea, I think, especially given the various briefings that we've had over the last few months? Absolutely. Agreed?
Agreed.
We'll now move to item six, and that's the Budget 2017/18 update. You'll find that report pages 13 to 16. councillor Hall, have you got anything?
Thank you, Leader. Members, I'd briefly like to say a few words on the budget and some of the items which are contained within it. Since last year's budget, Waverley has seen its revenue support grant reduced by about £700,000. We've been told that the new homes bonus worth around £700,000 is also to be trimmed. And on the HRA, we've seen our revenue cut by 1% a year compounded for the next four years. Over the medium term, or roughly about a four-year period, these three factors amount to a real financial loss for the council of around about £6 million. Given this context, the executive and officers were faced with a fairly binary choice. Either we raise revenues and find efficiencies, or we cut the frontline services to our residents. The executive agreed that our primary responsibility is to defend the services to our residents, including sports facilities, daycare centres, meals on wheels, refuse collection, street cleaning, community safety, grants for community improvement, and of course, the provision of affordable and social housing, to name but a few. To supplement the budget and the provision of services in the years to come, the investment board has been convened with its first purchase already in the pipeline. The Brightwell's regeneration project will also go some way to providing sustainable revenues in the years to come. The council has not been idle when it comes to taking revenue-earning investment opportunities to boost its income to provide services. But this proposed budget must assume that the new projects, being only in the developmental stage, provide no income in the next financial year, and therefore, we must balance the budget, this year's budget, without the addition of the expected revenue streams. The proposed budget to go to ONS is prudent, balanced and fair, and above all, it protects services to our residents, without the expectation of cash windfalls which may come. Please join me, members, in supporting its referral to the ONS committee. Thank you, Leader.
councillor Hall, thank you. Members, any other comments on item six? councillor Martin?
Thank you, Leader. I just wanted to make one comment really on the investment board, and that's obviously that we have got one project coming, hopefully coming to fruition. And I think it's proof positive that the investment board is doing what it was set up to do, and I look forward to trying to secure more deals to facilitate next year's budget over the course of the next year.
Thank you councillor Martin. I think as you say, we've got some very challenging times ahead of us. We are asking the joint overview and scrutiny to really look at absolutely every aspect. There are indicative proposals that they're going to be reviewing next Monday, and I would say that they are indicative proposals at this stage. Absolutely nothing's set in stone, but we do have a very significant budget shortfall that we do need to ensure that we meet and we cover. We'll obviously continue to make sure that our priority remains, as we've discussed as an executive and as a group, as a Conservative group, our absolute priority is protecting as far as we can our frontline services and of course, our most vulnerable residents. So we are very mindful of that and we are very keen, and I think you'd all endorse this, I'm sure, that we absolutely find the right balance so that we can continue to deliver the services for our residents, which ultimately is why we're all here as councillors. Colleagues, there are two recommendations under item six, and I would ask if they're agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item seven, which is the budget management report, which again, you'll find on pages 17 to 26. I understand we have speaker councillor Hyman, you wish to speak.
Thank you, Leader. Good evening. I just wondered whether you wanted to, or the portfolio holder wanted to introduce this before I spoke, or...
No, if you'd like to speak first, that's fine. Thank you.
Happily, thank you very much. I must admit, when I indicated or had notified to speak on this, I had only had a chance to very quickly scan read through it, and I'd noticed firstly that paragraph seven on page 19 and paragraph 11 on page 20 both applied to parking and seemed to tell completely different stories, and I thought that was odd. But I now realise that actually, it pretty much intends to, one's giving the positive and one's giving the negative, so to speak. So it's not a problem, but I would query, would it be necessary to have them separated if it's going forward to council, which it will probably not in this form anyway? Main issue on this, to me, is that my difficulty in understanding some of the figures, and I've got new figures, on page 21 in paragraph 16 halfway down the table, for instance, and the same applies to a number of others, but this is one I understand, it's easy to refer to, the Memorial Hall. We've been told, I think, that this is coming in at 2.3 or 2.5 million as a project, and the numbers that I see there are 2.177 million that's in this year, so presumably might be more. I'm told that this includes monies that have been added on since the budget was agreed by the council last year for this item, and £10,000 for the Farnham Town Football Club's car park, which we're expecting a planning application for in retrospect. I'm having difficulty understanding what the total numbers are and what's been included, because then a few paragraphs later, we've got, or paragraph 17 below in fact, we've got £40,000 for the pump house for the training services, which again, is going to be part of this budget. How am I or members of the public meant to really know what's included in these numbers and what isn't? You know, how would I know if the council had agreed to these figures in the first place? That's the difficulty I'm having with this, because I'm looking at what we're going to be doing at ONS next week, and if I can't understand the numbers in front of me, I'm afraid, I'm not going to be very helpful. Thank you, Leader.
So your question is, councillor Hyman, is that you'd like some further clarification on those areas? Yes?
Well, not necessarily tonight, but so that we know for next week whether all these are going to get put together so it makes sense as one project, because I see it as being one project, and at the moment, we've got... Do you know what I mean?
Right.
I want it simplified perhaps, so I can understand it.
What I'll do firstly, obviously, I wasn't aware of your concerns tonight, so if you want, obviously, we can go away and the officers can go into a little bit more detail for you, not a problem at all. But Mr Clark is happy, if you don't mind, Mr Clark, could you come in and answer that question first? Thank you.
Certainly, Leader. Leader, with large capital projects, they often span a number of financial years. This report concerns 1617's spend to date. The total cost of the Memorial Hall project is somewhere in the region of £3 million. That was approved by council last year. What this statement is showing on page 21 is that the latest forecast is that 2.177 of that £3 million will fall in the financial year 1617, and the balance will fall in next year. And I think there was some relatively minor spend in the previous year as well of the £3 million. But we believe that we will come within that budget overall, but it will span three financial years in total. So that is why it's showing a figure less than the overall scheme total, Leader. At ONS next week, there will be the full capital programme that's presented, excuse me, that will show 1718 and the following two years' spend. It doesn't look backwards, it looks at the 1718 onwards, and members will be considering, you know, future years' budgets, because the current year and current schemes have already been approved by council.
Thank you very much, Mr Clark. Hopefully that helps to clarify and you'll have the rest of the information you're asking, you know, you need for the meeting next week, councillor Hyman?
Yeah, we'll manage. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
councillor Hall?
Thank you, Leader. Okay, item seven, we've essentially got four reschedules and five vehemence. Reschedules are when money scheduled for a previous time period is moved forward to a future time period, and a vehement is when money is moved from one pot into a slightly different pot, generally speaking, to accomplish the same aim but in a different pot. So I give you items one to nine. Thank you, Leader.
Colleagues, any comments at all? So we have nine recommendations under item seven. Are those recommendations agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item eight, which is something that I know is very close and very passionate in terms of close to the heart of the deputy leader, which is the customer service review. So the report's pages 27 to 48, and I'm going to hand over to councillor Martin to take us through that. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. As you've already said, this is an item with regards to the customer services review. This has gone through the corporate overview and scrutiny committee, and we had a very good meeting at that, which members there were able to look at the plans that the team has got, particularly the foresight team that they've drawn up, and generally, the feedback. In fact, I would say entirely, the feedback was very positive, and members were very keen for us as a council to get on with things and progress the customer services improvements. The entire presentation is appended on the papers that we put to the overview and scrutiny committee, and essentially, this is just a sort of first step to saying, crack on with the review. So I'm very keen to get things going and start seeing some improvements, and I thoroughly commend it to the executive.
councillor Martin, thank you. I think we'd all agree that the proposals really are excellent, and this is certainly an area that I think we all want to start to really see move forward. So my thanks to, obviously, to councillor Martin, but also to the officers involved, led by David Allen, who I know have put an awful lot of work into this, ongoing for quite a long period of time behind the scenes to sort of bring this forward. So I, as I say, I look forward to starting to see this really take shape and roll out. Colleagues, there's one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item nine, which is the report of the Constitution Sig. Again, that report runs pages 49 to 60, and again, I understand, Mr councillor Hyman, you would like to speak to this item?
Thank you again, Leader, very much. Yes, it's the reason I came along this evening. I do have some concerns about this. It's the new overview and scrutiny arrangements which are going to be coming in presumably from May. As far as I'm concerned, I think it's accepted wisdom that for effective scrutiny, the minority group representatives need to be able to put items on to the scrutiny committees' forward programmes. And I'm not entirely sure whether I see in any of these changes or the existing, excuse me, in the existing constitution that is specified that we're able to do so. So I'm saying, you know, scrutiny won't work unless chairman can, of the committees can put items on to the agenda, and so I'm looking for confirmation firstly, that that will be possible. I'm also concerned that this, the move to four committees may in some ways reduce the power of the minority groups, because there would be one member only, we've got four independent members at the moment on the two scrutiny committees, we would after May therefore have one on each of them, which would be acting as the chairman, but obviously, the chairman has, to a lesser extent, the ability to be able to speak freely during the meeting, because they're managing the meeting. So it is of concern that the powers, that this change would be taking away powers from the minority group, and I'm thinking, there isn't necessarily an easy solution to that. But I think we ought to be able to scrutinise it, and I would hope that this would go in front of the scrutiny committee to scrutinise the future scrutiny arrangements. Particularly because, for instance, the Constitution Sig is recommending these changes, but the constitution itself is useless, because it's got no page numbers, no paragraph numbers, it can't be referenced, it's impossible to use. It's a tool we should be able to use to reference if we want to raise a point of order, we'd have to refer to it, but you can't refer to it, because there are no page numbers, no paragraph numbers, et cetera. And numbering throughout is repeated in lots of different groups or topics, or whatever they call them. I think also this, from the changes that are being made, it would also make call-in impossible, which I don't think is a good idea necessarily, because we would only have one on each of the, each of the new scrutiny committees. It would be with eight of the majority party on them. It would probably be impossible to ever get half, where four members of the opposition should be enough to be able to call something in. It looks to me as though we wouldn't be able to. There's certainly no clarification, I think if there's, you know, the new, the changes to the constitution ought to refer to or make it clear what the call-in requirements would be. There's also more needed, the coordinating board would have eight members, two of each. It doesn't say in here who would share it or who would have the casting vote, so it would probably be four all arguing all the time, or could be. And scrutiny isn't about, you know, hitting the buffers, because we can't agree on what we want to scrutinise. All of these could be overcome in some ways, but I think the constitution needs to set it out, and I'm concerned that it doesn't look to me, and I may be wrong, because I haven't had a chance to really pick it apart, it does look to me like we've got problems there. And finally, I think on annex three on page 59, I've noted, it says in the second paragraph on there, if an executive portfolio holder is invited to attend...
Would you like to wrap up, councillor Hyman?
I think the law, yes, I am doing, thanks. The law says that attendance is required if called by the committee, not invited. So I think that might need changing also, the wording there to reflect the law, but I'm sure your lawyers will perhaps guide you better on that. Thank you very much, Leader.
Thank you councillor Hyman. I'll take some of the points you've raised in no particular order, if I may. I think it's just important to reiterate that the Constitution Sig has met, and it's made up of councillor Williamson, who is the leader of your group, and he was in agreement with these proposals. I have to say, we had some very lengthy, I mean, Mr Taylor was present and Mrs McQuillan at these meetings, we did have some very lengthy and robust debate about a number of these areas. And as I say, councillor Williamson was in agreement with the proposals. Just to help clarify for you, at the moment with this, we're putting forward the general principles, and once those have actually been agreed by the council, the next step will actually be to amend the constitution, because you're quite right, we'll need to make sure that the constitution itself is amended and updated so that that's in line with these changes. I think one of the main concerns you have is that this could, from what I can hear from sort of what you're saying, you feel that this could actually inhibit scrutiny. I can assure you that the absolute reverse is the case. That was the reason for the scrutiny review which was undertaken by the panel last year, and it was a very lengthy review, and we've ensured that we've also looked at learnings from a number of other boroughs and districts to ensure that we do have very robust and very challenging scrutiny. Any member, whatever their party, can put an item on that committee for them to look at and agree that they will scrutinise. That's absolutely not a problem. And in terms of call-in, well, even when we've had the Conservative group as sort of the majority party, and only the Conservative group on overview and scrutiny, we've still had items that have been called in. So again, there will be no issue in terms of call-in. And you spoke about the number of members from, I think, your group and a concern there. Again, the actual makeup of these new committees, you know, is down to proportionality, political proportionality. So, you know, we have to have some form of guidance and some form of process, and that's exactly what we've made sure that we've done here. There is a lot more structure to this process, and that's what we've tried to ensure throughout. So I hope that starts to reassure you in terms of actually answering some of the questions that you've raised. But as I say, as a group, we certainly took the findings of the scrutiny panel last year very, very seriously. Indeed, some of my executive were members of that panel, councillor Els, councillor Edwards, and as I say, we want to see very robust scrutiny at Waverley, and that is what the Constitution Sig, as I say, which consisted also of councillor Williamson, believe will happen. So as I say, we have the recommendations that are before you, members. Anyone else on the executive, any comments you'd like to make on this? councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. Yes, I was part of that panel, and it was a very comprehensive report that was made. And I can assure councillor Hyman, as a former chairman and vice chairman of overview and scrutiny the community, I can assure him, this is a much, much better solution to the scrutiny of what the council does than has ever existed in my time at the council. And be assured that there are many, many backbenchers who sit in on that committee that will ensure proper scrutiny takes place. Thank you very much.
councillor Els?
Thank you, Leader. I'd just like to add that it's probably a good idea to keep in mind that when councillor Edwards and I were on this, on this committee, review committee, we were not on the executive. We didn't expect to be on the executive when we first began the process, and our aim was purely to improve the scrutiny process. So we had no agenda other than that. I think that's quite important to keep in mind. I think that's quite important to keep in mind.
Thank you, councillor Els. Mr Bainbridge, you wanted to come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Just because the point was raised, I don't know whether it helps councillor Hyman and helps the executive in particular to know that the constitution does require executive members to attend if they're invited, or if they're required to attend, that's the wording in the constitution by an ONS committee, it's in the constitution, it's paragraph 14 of the section that you're looking at. The, it is the duty of those persons to attend if so required, it does say that in the constitution. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Much appreciated. Colleagues, there are 11 recommendations in all. Now, recommendations one to three within the report relate to the actual constitutional rules in respect of questions from members, and I really intended to make the rules for those, these, consistent with those relating to questions by members of the public. So we've tried to ensure that we've, everything has been aligned very clearly there. The recommendations that you will see, recommendations four to 11, relate to the actual new arrangements for overview and scrutiny. So that includes areas such as the establishment of the committees, the establishment of an informal coordinating board, the terms of reference for the committees, protocols for portfolio holder attendance, and, as I say, arrangements for ensuring the nomination of the chairs and vice chairs of those committees. So there are 11 recommendations in all, I intend to take those in block. Are those agreed, colleagues?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 10, something very different. The consultation on the removal of BT payphones in Waverley. Councillor Bolton and councillor Adams, the report is page 61 to 74. Would you like to lead, councillor Bolton, on that?
Thank you, Leader. I'm pleased to present this report, which describes the council's response to BT's proposed removal of 48 payphones in the borough. BT would like to remove the payphones on the grounds that they are used infrequently and are expensive to maintain. To summarise briefly the report, the council has been keen to ensure that the public is fully consulted, and that we seek to retain the payphones that are wanted and needed in rural locations and residential areas. Thank you.
Councillor Bolton, thank you. I was very pleased to see that there'd been a lot of input from members on this. I know certainly a number of members in the villages gave a lot of input, and I think what's, just to reiterate the point that councillor Bolton's made, a number of members did highlight, and it's great that we really do have that local knowledge, certain rural areas where there isn't any mobile signal. I know there are a couple that I saw on the list where members had highlighted that sometimes they're close to an accident, black spot and so forth, and we're going to retain those phone boxes, or the proposal is that those be retained. So as I say, to all members who responded and gave their feedback, a big thank you, because this sort of consultation really does rely on local knowledge, and that's where all our members are so crucial. So in terms of this particular proposal and the recommendation, there are two recommendations. Are those agreed? Thank you. Moving to item 11, which is the updating the scheme of delegation for environmental and antisocial behaviour enforcement. Again, pages 75 to 84 on your agenda, members, and councillor Edwards and councillor Dinas. Councillor Dinas, you're leading on this, I believe.
Thank you, Leader. I'll speak first, but I think it's a very simple subject anyway. It's been numerous changes in legislation, and we need, and there is a need, to amend the scheme of delegation. As you said, it's pages 75 to 84, and that outlines the changes which will provide clarity, achieve efficiency and ensure officers are appropriately and authorised to act. There is only one recommendation, which is page 76, your papers and page six of the agenda. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. Councillor, Mrs King.
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. I really welcome this report. Housing have operated with their own set of schedules up until now, and I really, you'll notice from the annex, which doesn't seem to have a number, page 79 onwards, head of housing operations features largely through this, and I really welcome this piece of work. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other comments? No, in that case, there is one recommendation under item 11. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 12, which is the draft calendar of meetings for 2017, 18, on pages 85 to Any comments at all? No? Again, I would point out that what officers have tried to do is ensure that there are very regular meeting dates showing for next year, next calendar year, for joint planning committees, so that everyone has sufficient time to ensure those have been planned in. And we've also ensured that there are a number of briefing sessions and training sessions booked in, so we'll be moving forward with those. My thanks to Mrs McQuillan for preparing this, and there's one recommendation. Are you agreed with that?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 13, the executive director's actions.
Thank you, Leader. There are no items on this category this month. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe there are no items that require the exclusion of the press and public. So on that note, thank you very much, everyone, and I'll close the meeting.